Testing the mic, check, one, two, three. Hey webcam, this is me asking you a question, check, one, two, three. Check, one, two, three, webcam, asking a question. Checking audio, one, two, three, test.
Hey Jim, oh, that might...
Okay.
Okay, so we called this special meeting for the purpose of gathering information from Baker Tilly. Jada Kent with Baker Tilly was going to be here today to share this information with the county council. Due to Texas ice storm, she is still in Texas, but through technology Joey is going to have her on, and she's going to be running the slideshow. So just a little backstory here, when I took over as president in January, my focus was, this is my top priority to try to get the Baker Tilly study wrapped up so we can roll it out. Department heads can see it, and then we can start with any kind of an appeal process and find out what the council has to do. Jada is going to guide us through how we got to this point, what we need to do to finish up to this point, and then what the answers that the council had to do. But, so I'll go ahead and we'll have some feedback and then call the meeting to order. So first thing we can do is, can we have a roll call please?
Ms. Weger, Mr. Thacker.
Here.
Mr. Thees.
Here.
Mr. Norris. Mr. Thompson.
Travis did indicate that he might be running a little late, so he may pop in here short. So with that being said, is you have, I just wanted to give everybody the idea of this. So we're, we're going to be trying to, we're not going to have, unless there's something that I'm not aware of, we're not going to be taking questions from the public for Jada. Jada's here to give information to the council. We want to do this in a public forum, we don't have anything to hide, we're showing everybody, we're trying to get this progress completed, so, okay. Joey, you got her? There's Jada.
Jada, can you hear us?
Yes. Very good. Can you see my screen? Perfect. All right, then we'll just get started. Thanks for that introduction, my name is Jada Kent. I am practice leader over our compensation consulting group. This presentation is going to walk through at a high level our methodology for conducting the study and kind of the end result of that study in terms of how it would look to move forward with implementation. So I'm going to, as I mentioned, talk about the methodology, the major phases that we kind of ran through, and then our recommendations based on results for each of those phases. Similar to some of the presentations at the beginning of the project. Phases that we communicated we would be walking through. We started by meeting with the county's project team to just kind of understand what is the current situation in terms of what positions exist, what are these positions doing, what pay plans exist, what challenges are you having from your pay plans and so on. So we collected a whole bunch of information, and that included position analysis questionnaires from each employee. So that was us sending our online questionnaire to those employees, and then once we had collected all of that information, made them available to supervisors to review. The point of that supervisor review was to make sure that we had accurate and complete information for all positions. So those questionnaires really became the foundation for the rest of the study. We leaned very heavily on what your employees told us they were doing in their positions. And that's because if your current job descriptions maybe had become a little outdated, you know, you get a new piece of software or equipment and the job changes, right? So we wanted to have an accurate depiction of what those jobs were doing. So we used the information collected from PAQs to conduct job evaluation, which I'll get into more on the next slide. And then we also did a market assessment, collecting base pay information from organizations identified in the study. And then we worked with the county to kind of come up with a plan for pay plans, what pay structures currently existed, what works, what doesn't work, what should we do instead. And then from there, also developing implementation plans around those. So trying to get towards this last phase where we're just kind of documenting everything so we can hand it over and put a nice bow on it. so we hand it over and put a nice bow on it and go from there. So I'll dig in a little bit more on the internal equity piece of this project. So we have our own job evaluation system, it's called SAFE, which stands for the systematic analysis and factor evaluation. And SAFE was developed specifically to measure local government jobs. And it does so with these compensables factors that you can see in the table, education experience, level of work, human relations, physical demands, working conditions, the independence, and then the impact on the organization as well as supervision. So all nine of these factors are what we use to kind of measure, I guess you could say, each of the jobs within the county. Different weight is given to certain aspects. You'll know physical demands and working conditions, for example, are the lowest percentages, and sometimes driven by legal compliance. The ADA says that you can't put too much weight on categories like those. And so there is a reason behind why the system is related with it. So being a point factor system means that the end result of this process is a total score for every job. And that's really how we're establishing a hierarchy of jobs within the county relative to the internal value of each position. So at the same time, we were running a market study. We worked with the county to come up with a list of peer organizations, and usually those are organizations that look like you and work like you. That can mean same size, sizes may be population served, whether you mean number of employees, but services provided certainly. You know, who you may be losing your sheriffs to is not who you lose your auditors to. So making sure we have a diverse enough group of peer organizations to cover all of your services, but also check the box on competition for talent. Who do you actually lose your employees to and actually gain from? We've also got private sector represented in the data set through published salary survey data. There's three surveys that we used data from that I'll get into a little bit more. For benchmark positions, the definition there is just a position that very commonly exists across industry. Administrative assistant is an example, that's a position that will exist in any kind of organization in any industry. Adjustments that were made to the data, work week is an example, is an organization has thirty-seven-five work week versus a forty-hour work week. We just want to make sure we're plugging in the correct hourly rate, rate control, we make that comparison. We may age the data if it's not for the current fiscal year. It usually applies to the Bureau of Labor Statistics, they're about a year behind. And then there's a cost of labor differential that we apply. So I have a slide, we'll talk about that a little bit more. But cost of labor is not the same as cost of living. It's supply and demand of labor, and so that's the adjustment that we made. In terms of the quality control for the data, I want to point out that we did not wait any of the data. There's no fear that it's more important than another fear. And we also required at least three matches per benchmark position. So at the end of the day, to establish a market value, we're really just averaging those two points. And if you don't have enough data points plugged in, you're drawing conclusions without enough information. So we had not just a quality, but a quantity requirement for the data. And then what is a good match? By definition, it's a seventy-five percent overlap in those duties and responsibilities. So for the public peers, there were sixteen organizations identified, actually I think it was like there's about seventeen. That were identified by the county to be included in the survey. And we were able to collect data from thirteen of those, the ones that are in total involved. There's four that we were not able to get data from, Howard County, Putnam, Sullivan, and Lobash County Correctional. The last three are going to be those published salary survey sources that we use to represent the private sector. So we have subscriptions to Comp Analyst and Economic Research Institute, and the Bureau of Labor Statistics is managed by the federal government. So to talk a little bit more about the cost of labor differential, this is a little bit cost of living, but it's the supply and demand of labor in a given region. So unemployment and qualified workers are more so weighed by this factor. In the top, you can see ninety-point-nine, that is the cost of labor differential for your locality. We took that cost of labor for each of the organizations that were included, and then calculated the difference between yours. So Columbus and DNF, for example, a little bit higher at ninety-three-point-nine. So we adjusted their data down three percent. Anytime you see a negative number in that far right column, it means their cost of labor was higher, and we're trying to take that regional influence out and just drill down to that apples apple this fear is the cost of labor. So I'll also point out that we get this data from the Economic Research Institute. They have a geographic assessor tool, and that data is ultimately pulled from the Bureau of Labor Statistics. So for the market results, there were a hundred and fifty-three positions included in the survey. And from there, only nine had insufficient data. And so that means there were less than three matches, we could not create market value calculation. But overall, we ended up with market values for about ninety-two percent of those benchmarks. Some of the results that we prepared and reviewed with the county's project team were an aggregate of those results. So for each of the hundred and forty-four positions where we did have enough data, it was an average minimum midpoint and maximum that we looked at. But then we also had a comparison of the county's pay ranges to the market. And that's by comparing the midpoint. So the midpoint is very commonly observed to be the market, quote unquote. And so that's why we're comparing current midpoints against the market average midpoint to just see where the county stands. So then, once the market was completed, we started talking about pay plans in terms of what pay plans currently exist, which groups of positions, what kind of pay plans are they, what challenges are you having? And so, you know, the number of pay plans that an organization may need can be influenced by a lot of things, especially the number of jobs, diversity of jobs. You know, if you've got certain groups of positions that are just more sensitive to the market, for example, you'll see that the low enforcement positions, then maybe you need to be able to make different decisions for this group of positions than the other. And having them on a separate pay plan allowed you to do that. So currently, the county has three pay structures, elected general merit, and we have also prepared three pay structures, but therefore, it's a general pay plan that has about two-hundred-three positions allocated to it, a public safety plan that has twenty positions, and sheriff plan that has thirteen positions. So building out those pay plans, we then were tasked with getting all the positions assigned to a grade in those pay plans. And looking at doing so, we considered the internal equity and the external competitiveness. So the end result of the job evaluation process was a total score. And then we also have a numerical value from the market study in the market average midpoint. So each of these dots represents one of those high-end, elite, work positions, benchmark positions where we had good data. And so each dot is going to be on this chart where their job evaluation score and their market average midpoint intersects. So you can kind of see how the natural distribution of the jobs within the county kind of relates internally and externally. So this blue line represents the regression through all of those data points. To just kind of say, on top of that, there's an eighty-two percent correlation between these two data sets. So all that senses that a manager is a manager internally and externally. The other lines that you see here are the pay plan that we built. This is for the general pay plan. So you've got the midpoint, you've got the maximum and the minimum. That's not to say this position is above the maximum. That's really just to say we've built a pay plan that mostly accommodates the natural distribution of jobs there. Positions that are kind of following, falling above and below, that means that the market is really high on this, or really low. And the way to get it closer to that line would be the job, the internal value needs to come up. Or alternatively, down here, to get this closer to the regression line, the internal equity needs to come down. And so that's just kind of, you know, when you're looking at the market, which is inherently influenced by private sector, you're going to find jobs that are just valued very differently in the market than you ever would internally. Maybe internally, this position is really important to you all, but all the organizations we compared it to, it's just, it's used differently, for example. So maybe the market data's not quite there. But in general, we've got a really good progression. This also means that the county would be able to use our job evaluation system to analyze and evaluate jobs going forward, and get them onto the piecemeal. So as jobs continue to change, or new jobs are introduced, you'd be able to evaluate them and see what appropriate grade assignment they should be placed in based on the job evaluation. So from there, we've got the pay plans, we've got all the positions assigned to these pay plans. We then turn to look at the people in those positions, and where do those assessing salaries fall relative to these new pay ranges? And we ran a few different scenarios to give the county options in adopting the new pay structures. Option one is looking at moving employees to the minimum if they're below that minimum. So the point of this scenario is really just to get everyone onto the pay structures so that it can be adopted. Everyone else who've already got a salary falling within are not impacted. In this general plan, for example, of the three-hundred-and-seventy-six employees, there's thirty-two who have a salary that fall below their new pay range. And it's only those thirty-two who are being adjusted to fall onto the pay plan. So across all three pay plans, if the county decided this is the option they wanted to adopt these pay plans, it would cost about eighty-three, almost eighty-four thousand. As you can see from the sheriff and the public safety, there were no position, no employees that fell below their minimum. In option two, we're looking at moving employees to the minimum if they're below. That's our starting point to get everyone on the pay plan. Or a two percent adjustment, which I'll raise later. So this is moving these thirty-two employees to their new minimum because they're below, but also everyone else would be getting an adjustment of two percent. Doing this across all three pay structures would equate to about five-hundred and one thousand dollars. The point of this scenario is really just to kind of give everybody something. No employee would receive less than two percent in this scenario. So as an example, if one of these thirty-two, moving them to minimum was a fifty cents, then they would instead receive that full two percent so that everyone gets at least a two percent adjustment. In option three, we were looking at pay progression. So this option is moving employees through their range relative to their time and position. Point five percent times their years, to be exact. So a employee with a county for ten years would move five percent through their range total. The point of this is really to just kind of move those longer ten-year quotes further down the range. If you've got, you know, the price of new employees to past years, allow new employees to come in and lead throw over those longer ten-year quotes, which is kind of helping put that separation back in. So to do this option across all three pay plans would be about one-point-two million if you adopted each pay plan with option three. And then this last option is looking at moving employees to the midpoint of their pay range. So similar to option one, it was if you were below the minimum, move to minimum. And this one is if you're below the midpoint, move to midpoint. And so the midpoint represents the market value. So this is how much it would cost if every employee was paid at market. Across all three pay plans, it would be about one-point-five. I'll point out that just for the sake of having the options, it may be appropriate to use one option for one pay plan and another option for another. But this is just kind of looking at if you did the same option for all three. And I say that because there's different things happening in the sheriff pay plan and public safety plan and in general. Those positions are influenced externally by different factors than maybe other groups are. So whatever implementation option is most appropriate for those groups. But in general, this is what we're asking from the county. First of all, to approve the new proposed pay plans. And in doing so, I'll point out, the market data that we've collected at this point is perishable. It's becoming a little dated. So if we're going to move forward with adopting these pay structures, the consideration of do we need to age them to kind of account for the time that's passed? And is so by how much? And we can provide recommendations for you all and kind of what the trends have been if you do want to go in that direction. So also adopting the grade assignments that have been established. And very normally, when we do this process, there is an opportunity to appeal afterwards. So this new thing rolls out, and not everybody's a hundred percent happy, then there will be an opportunity for employees or departments to pay off concerns for their employees to ask for a re-class review and see what happens there. Then finally, coming up with an implementation plan to adopt the new pay structures and grade assignments. Just pointing out that what I just said, it doesn't have to be the same option for all three, but looking at what's going to achieve the county's business goals, but also one that's fiscally sustainable. These costs are not a one-time cost to every year. You're adding this to your payroll. And then finally, my biggest recommendation is to continue efforts like these. Once you adopt a new pay plan and grade assignments, you need to continue to review jobs and keep an eye on the market, shift those structures with the market. Also provide increases so that employees are moving through their range. So just making sure you've got the policies in place to kind of administer and maintain this system going forward. And then where do we go from here? So there's a couple of things still outstanding. If we get a decision from you all to approve the pay structures and grade assignments and implementation, we would hairfind a report, come up with this final presentation, everyone. We also want to meet with department heads and employees to provide this information to them as well. And everything over to the county will provide training to the HR staff. But we also very often provide ongoing assistance for our clients. And it's my understanding the county's interested in Baker Tilly providing that here. So if there is a question about a position or a request to review it, that's being handled outside of the organization, and we would be providing our recommendations. The final deliverable for this project is going to be new job descriptions, and those will be based on questionnaires that employees filled out in the beginning. So I know that was a lot of information. If anybody wants to see anything again, especially the ones that has those big numbers on it, we can definitely go back and answer any questions.
So Jada, this is Todd. And what I'd like to do is open up to the council if they have questions for you. So then, while you're available, you can go to the appropriate slide and, you know, maybe add some clarity to it. So I'll open that up, and I think, I know, I know we'll have some questions.
Do you have some questions? I think you, you already somewhat answered it, Jada, but you mentioned that the, the data might already be somewhat aged a little bit. So my question was, how often do we need to adjust these things? And is that going to be done by an outside group like Baker Tilly? Or is that something done through HR? You know, I, I think we went, you kind of went there, but I just want to clarify that for our own understanding, because being part of the budget process, just understanding how often we'll take a look at new numbers and things.
Yeah, so the answer is whatever you want it to be. HR can certainly do this research, but we often do it for our clients as well. And how often it happens, traditionally, it'll go one time a year when public sector work. Just the budget process, it happens about then. I will say with the market, the way it's been this past year, we're seeing organizations make adjustments to their pay structures more than one time a year. So if that becomes the trend to stay aggressive, that you've got to look at it more than one time a year, we will kind of, we'll see that, and if we're having an ongoing relationship, we'll let you know. Like, hey, we probably need to do a mid-year review.
Okay. And to follow in, is, it seems like we are going to need to do some adjusting. Is that because we were not necessarily in the process of updating things as much? Or, I guess, you know, I just want to make sure that we don't get into the situation again, so.
So the study that we just did was pretty comprehensive. You shouldn't need to do something as thorough, except for maybe a five to seven years, unless you start to see like massive changes in your jobs. Right, like a new piece of software can just change everybody's life. And you need to make sure those job descriptions are up to date. And also this past year, the way it's impacted certain groups of jobs, a lot more aggressively than other groups of jobs. If you've, if you're seeing a lot of changes happening, it may be time to do a comprehensive review. As long as you're making these kind of maintenance things every year. As long as you're making these kind of maintenance things every year and market adjustments to keep your structures up to date, that should make the every five to seven year review a lot an easier pull the slot in terms of implementation cost, but also just help you keep pace in the interim, the market and so on.
Okay. I just have one other question other than that. So with option four, from what I can tell, you said that's the one where we move everyone to the midpoint? Or you said we could do it different with different groups? With that, there's going to be, and I just, again, to clarify for myself, like with option two, you said it was a two percent adjustment for, you know, everyone. Option four, there's going to be some people that get bigger adjustments than others just to get them to that midpoint, from what I understand. Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes. For, I mean, the cost to, you know, this one is a lot more, obviously. I'll also add that it may not be appropriate for every employee to be at the midpoint. The midpoint represents the market value. So an employee at or above the midpoint should be fully proficient in their role. They're not still learning. You know, if they are still learning, then probably somewhere between minimum and midpoint is more appropriate.
Okay, that's good to know. So midpoint really, fully proficient, that's where you kind of talk a little bit, like if we do have some of that longevity, that's where we're seeing that then? I mean, that would be, okay.
So, you know, we're pulling market data and the market value reflects, you know, this pool job being completed. And if you've got someone who's still learning the job, they're not doing the whole job, so.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Anybody else have a question?
Jada, I'm Vicki Wager, I'm on the Budget Committee. Am I correct that you started this study in April of '22, is that correct?
I think actually it was about a year ago this time. I was on site doing presentations to the county's employees to kick off the project. So I want to say we started it officially January of '22.
But the study was April.
The market, yeah, the market study was April.
And then when was it completed?
I guess we need to talk about what you consider completed.
Well, I'm trying to figure out how aged it is.
Yeah, so if the market data was pulled in April, it's from April is when we need to consider to adjust it from.
Okay.
Yeah, and Erin has joined us here. So Erin, this is on the, there's four options here and if you want her to go back on anything. But I do have, you gave us a number on option one, Jada, that showed how many people were, it really affected, and that was only like 32. But if we look at option four, how many of all three pay plans would be affected in option four?
Yeah, it'd be the majority.
Okay. I didn't see the number on there.
The only employees that are not receiving an adjustment are these 18 that have a salary above their maximum.
So it'd be 18 on the general and then it would be zero on the midpoint option four for the sheriff and zero that wouldn't be getting a raise on the merit, right? Is that right? Did I say that right?
So 100% of the employees in sheriff and public safety and then all but 18 on the general.
Okay. Yeah, so, and you know, and I talked to you about this and just getting up to speed on this. So, I mean, as a council, we would make a decision, one of the things, as you said, is when you would want these pay plans to go into effect, correct? And, you know, now I think if we have this to the council before budget and we make a decision on before budget, then we know how to incorporate that into our budget for the fiscal year, right?
Yes.
Very good. And do you want to, for the benefit of the ones that, talk a little bit about that appeal process? How do you see that? That how that would normally work if somebody, once we did get this and the decisions are made by council and then we're ready to share this with the department heads, how would they make the appeals?
Yeah, so normally we have a form that we use called a reclass request form that we would make available to you all so they could grab that from HR. And if it's the employee for their own position, they would fill them out and let us know, especially if there's any change with their job. Because we've collected PAQs as to what this information is based on. So if they just feel like maybe their job wasn't fully communicated in those documentations or there's been significant changes in their position, so we'd fill out that form. They send it over to us, we would kind of review it based on job evaluation and see, yeah, we do agree that it looks like a significant piece of this puzzle has changed, so this is going to be a grade we would recommend. Alternatively, if it doesn't look, if it looks like we did evaluate the job as it currently is, then we would just kind of reiterate how our decision was, whatever grade it was. And I'll point out that we, throughout this process, we're looking at positions, what positions are doing, not what people are doing. So even an employee filling out this one, we would be reviewing the position and not necessarily the person. And I say that in case the employee may have higher education, for example, than is required by the job, we're still measuring it by the job.
Well, just, will we be emailed what you just sent us?
Yeah.
Okay.
So I should have clarified that too. So in this process, Joey is coming up with laptops for us, for the council. Those are in, he's finishing the process, they should be available to pick up Monday, Tuesday, Joey, is that correct?
Yeah.
And if you need anything on it at that time, we will share this with it. And then what I hope to do, and we're not making any decisions today, but I'm hoping at the, or meeting on Tuesday, I will try to set up a subcommittee that could start working with Baker Tilly and the department heads to make sure we get this process done. And so we will have some, and then everybody on council then will be shown. Right now, if we look at it and we haven't made these decisions, the way I understand, the numbers that you have aren't really complete, right? Because we haven't made decisions on it, Jada, is that correct?
Right. Right. So the implementation that you're seeing are based on market data pulled from April. And also, the longer it goes, possibly the higher and the more market is going to change, right?
Yes.
Also, employees may be hired or employees may leave, so that's going to also kind of keep this target from moving.
Right. And from my understanding, if we make these decisions and then we have an appeal process and before the implementation of it, we may have to, as council, we may have to appropriate more money because we have then just changed a classification of a job, right? There's a possibility or a department, so, I mean, as long as we have a process, and my idea is that everybody has an opportunity to see it, to be heard, then to make their case before it's implemented. And then the council has to see it and we have to do what's fiscally sound for the council. If it is, if the council were to make a decision that they wanted to go midpoint, but they want to take two years to fully implement it, that would be a decision of the council and it'd have to be budgeted appropriately. And from what I look at it now is, and just learning a little bit about this, right now we are 32 people below currently, we are 32 people below our current salary compared to April of '22. That's without aging it. So we have to, in my eyes, that's after, and the numbers that you have there, current wages is with the 4%.
Right. So if, for example, the decision is we want to move forward, but we need to shift everything 4%, just pulling a number out, then that minimum's going to move.
Right.
Possibly employees will fall below and that would increase implementation.
Right. Oh, I'm sorry, Mr. Bramble.
Jim Bramble, county auditor. This study is based on the market compared to the county's wages as they were in April of '22?
No.
Of '24? Or does it include the pay raise that was given?
Now, what I said is the current wage is what it is today.
Right.
So that is, but the market study was done in April of '22. So that's showing that we are 32 people below, low is with our current wages right now, but reflected to the 2022 wage. So if we age that group, which I think we'll have to, then to get to low or midpoint, it's going to increase the implementation cost, is what she shared. If that's what the council decides to do, right, whatever. And that's where we're at, the point is where the council's going to have to make a decision on these items. If you could flip to that slide, Jada. So having this meeting, we are going to be tasked with deciding what we want to do, approve the new proposed pay plans. We're going to have to decide on the, approve the grade assignments, select an implementation plan, adopt the new pay structure and grade assignments. And we're going to have to adopt a policy, how to administer this going forward and compensation plan going forward. And then we also have what the next would be, if you could go back to that as well. Then we will get the final report. We will have a presentation, the commissioners, councils, schedule all this with the department heads, you know, and then have the training for HR, which I think is what they're doing. And then see if we want to have an ongoing maintenance with Baker Tilly. So I think everybody here is aware that it's been a while since we've done this and that's why it's probably going to be painful to get it, to get it to where, at whatever level we decide we need to get it to. Erin? Anything? David? Okay, Marie?
Sorry, I always have a question. I have just one question. And with other counties or groups that you've worked with, when you have the options like what we're looking at, do they usually take a couple of years to ease into that? Or, you know, considering that we're a government entity, or is that something you just kind of say, just do it, adjust it right away?
Years ago, I guess kind of, and people took a long time responding to the last recession. And so we would see like maybe take option four, and then they would take three years to implement option four. But if you think about taking three years, continuing three years to implement market rates from three years ago, so you're not staying on pace, you're not keeping up with anything. What I've been seeing most often is maybe adopting, let me get back over to it, option one is usually the cheapest option. It puts the pay plan in place right away. It's just looking at who's below and getting everyone onto it and then maybe doing something else the next year, just kind of depending on just availability. But not waiting to put it in place, putting it in place and then kind of just moving forward with whatever was the next thing they wanted to do.
From what you're saying, maybe doing an option one immediately, an option four at budget time, since that's like what makes, okay. All right, thank you.
So would that option one be retroactive to January 1 of this year? Would you recommend that?
You could do it that way. We have, in fact, a client who, we just can't get this meeting scheduled sooner than like the end of February, so they're going to retroactively do kind of a lump sum to make up for when it should have been implemented. So when you get into the, well, for us, it's a fund map, we can figure out whatever options you want to do with that. But yeah, if you wanted to say it was in place as of January 15th, whatever, we can figure out, we can figure out those costs.
Okay, thank you. And that number, just to be clear, Erin, that number is not aged. That number, eighty-three thousand, would get you to the market value of April '22. It's not the market value of January 1, 2023. I mean, if that's the goal. There again, that's why council's got to start making some decisions on what we want to get out of the study or how we want to implement the study. And then there's always that option of do nothing. I'm not in favor of that one, but I'm just saying that is, that is an option. Michael, do you have anything to add to or anything we need to consider on this?
No.
And at this time, we don't have anything that we need to vote on or have a motion for. We were just here to gather information in a public setting. So you guys see what we're up against and what we need to hold us accountable to get these decisions made. Are you going to make a motion? Mr. Bramble, Cheryl, anything? David? Okay. If we don't have anything, I'd accept a motion adjourned.
I move that we adjourn this meeting.
All those in favor, say aye.
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 All opposed? Meeting adjourned.
Thanks, Jada.
Thank you, Jada.
Um, I think.